My name is Troy Sealy. I work with Juvenile Court Services. And one of the areas that I cover is here in Jefferson County. I want to thank all of you for attending this evening. This is a town hall meeting for covering the topic of underage drinking. We hope this to be a very educational program for everyone present. We have five different speakers here this evening. Each speaker will be introduced. They will give a brief bio of themselves. And then they're going to share some stories, some information about how their job is tied to, or how they have dealt with young people that have been involved with underage drinking. Hearing the cell phone ring, I guess I would ask if we could all turn our phones either to vibrate or silent. I would appreciate that. This town hall meeting is being sponsored tonight by the Jefferson County Alcohol Consumption Task Force Committee. We meet on the second Monday of every month at the ISU Extension Office at the Jefferson County Fairgrounds. It's a noon time meeting. We meet from noon to 1:00. The meeting is open to the public. Right now, we do have a number of public members that do sit in on the committee meetings. We would love to have parents and students join us. I know over the 12 to 1 hour, that's kind of difficult, but maybe we can work something out with some teachers, or if you've got study halls at school, maybe we could have them join us. So what I will do is I will go ahead and give a brief introduction. Speakers will each speak anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes. Most of them have said 15 minutes is going to be pushing it. I do believe each of you were given a note card. If at any time you have any questions, go ahead and jot it down or collect those cards. Questions will be asked at the end of each of, at the end of all speakers. I know middle school students are getting some extra credit for one of their classes. I want to thank Mr. Flattery for his willingness to help us with that. For those of you in that class, my guess is you're not just going to get the credit for being here. I'm guessing you probably are going to be taking some notes. There might be a question on a test or quiz, so you want to make sure you're paying attention. I also know that there's other credit being given with community service work through the high school. So a lot of good things can come out of this meeting, and we hope that if we help one child in this community, I think we're definitely headed in the right direction. So again, I'd like to thank everybody for your participation. And again, jot down any questions that can be answered at the end of this presentation. First speaker will be David Thomas.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm a nice, shy, quiet boy, so I'll stand in front of the podium here. Actually, I will introduce myself real quick. I promised Troy I will keep it at 10 minutes. He said he would tap me if I go over my 10 minutes, so warn me if I start to get close. My name is David Thomas. I'm a captain with Fairfield Police Department. I've been a police officer for 17 years now. And in my career, I've been lucky enough to do several jobs, from investigations to canine handler to SWAT team leader. And so I've got some experience, I would like to think. I've seen some things. And unfortunately, I was on the alcohol enforcement team for several years, and that's why they're talking to me tonight. It probably was one of my not-so-favorite jobs because of the effects of alcohol that I saw from day to day. So what I'm going to tell you is I teach a lot, I do a lot of these talks. I usually, this is a tough topic for me, because I usually like to have fun. I like to joke around, and there just, there wasn't any way to start with a joke. I usually talk at the schools. I go over and joke around with the kids. Quite frankly, I did have a couple jokes I was going to tell, and they were actually lawyer jokes. I'm afraid there was a couple in the audience that would sue. I did Mr. Dilly over there, just looking for a reason to sue me. So I'm not going to tell you my lawyer jokes. The first thing I kind of wanted to talk about, and I always hated, when I was sitting in class and the speaker wanted to give stats, statistics, it was usually my time to quick text and catch up on my messages. So I'm not going to bore you with too many stats. I'm going to tell you a stat that I heard back 17 years ago when I was at the academy. And it's the only one that kind of stuck with me. But I kind of want to go, kind of mention this to you, so it, I don't know. Everybody in here, I'm sure, I'm real proud of our country. Everybody is a supporter of our veterans, our U.S. veterans that are great, that are protecting us on the front lines. And the stats that I looked at, because you see in the news all the time, when we lose one of those heroes, you know, it's huge. And so what my instructor in our alcohol enforcement class went back, and he said, "Can you imagine all the U.S. soldiers we've lost in World War I, World War II, and the Vietnam War? And how much that affected our nation?" And when I looked at those stats, they were right at 600,000 that we lost in those three wars. It's 594,000, a huge number of heroes. But the thing that shocked me is the OWI-related deaths since World War I are 1.7 million. And we don't see that on the news. I also looked, in 2007, we lost 4,013 heroes in Iraq. Saw it on the news every night, and it shocked everybody. That same year, we lost six, or I'm sorry, 17,600 people to OWI-related deaths. And for those folks, via, I'm talking some lawyer jargon, OWI is operating while intoxicated. That's our drunk driving law in Iowa. So a staggering statistics. Okay, I promise, I've got them stats. I can tell you, when I first started my career, all we wanted to do is deal with the offenders. We call them HULA offenses. Hopefully, I won't say that too much. HULA stands for Persons Under Legal Age. And that's the law we charge people with when they're drinking under 21. And when I first started this job, that's all we dealt with. We would go to parties and arrest everyone that was under 21, charge them with drinking under legal age. There were many reasons we did this. You know, it was a huge problem. I can tell you, it was kind of, when I first started the job 17 years ago, the fine for drinking under legal age was $15. It was actually pretty much a joke. Kids would just come out, say, "Okay, I've been drinking. Give me my hefty fine," and they would move on. I remember the day that it went to $100, because all of a sudden, we had to start chasing kids that had been drinking under legal age. All of a sudden, they decided they didn't want to pay those fines anymore. It is now up to $330 for your first offense of drinking under legal age. And you ask anybody, "Why is that fine so hefty?" And it's because it's such a huge problem now. It's such a serious problem, so they've made it a huge, huge fine. For an employee selling alcohol to somebody under 21 years of age, it's $735 fine. For the business, we can also charge them over $2,000 in fines. So as you can imagine, there isn't a lot of people that now will sell alcohol to minors that are in a store. We don't see that as much as we used to because of these hefty fines. I think we're kind of have a success story with kids drinking under legal age. They're a lot more cautious now than they used to be because of the hefty fines, but here's what we're finding out, we still have a huge problem. Unfortunately, it hasn't stopped the problem, they've just gotten better at it, like most things. What I'm going to tell you is actually kind of been a secret, I don't know, there doesn't seem to be a lot of knowledge out there, I guess you would say. But we started looking at the statistics. We started asking, "Do we have a problem here in Jefferson County and in Fairfield with the arrests we're making at these parties?" We looked at the alcohol-related injuries, and what we saw was we have more kids under 21 die from alcohol than all other drugs combined. Now, we have a meth problem, we have a prescription problem, we have several problems we're looking at. And when you take all those problems, and you still don't have as many deaths as you do from alcohol, you know where the problems are. Any cop that's ever worked a night shift B can tell you what the major number-one cause of every call they, or most every call they go to. You can imagine what the highest percentage reason, whether we go to a domestic assault, whether we go to a fight in progress, or a theft, it's usually they're drunk before the fight starts or before they go out to steal. So we see these calls over and over. And the other thing that always staggered me is, I probably can count on one hand, I've arrested, Lord only knows, Mr. Dilly can probably tell you because he's had to prosecute most of them, but I've arrested thousands and thousands of intoxicated people over the years. And I can count on one hand the amount of people that I've arrested that admit to me they're intoxicated. I don't want to offend anybody. I've seen some pretty scary things out there. I have seen gentlemen that defecated in their pants, that swore to me that they were not intoxicated. And when asked, "Sir, you've pooped in your pants," they will argue with you and swear up and down. So that is a huge concern, because anybody that jumps behind the wheel never is convinced they're too drunk to drive. We see that over and over again. It's actually very shocking when somebody says, "Yeah, I probably am too drunk to be The last thing I kind of want to talk to you guys about is, we've spent so many years dealing with the kids drinking, that we've actually, we started looking at the statistics, and what we've decided as prosecutors, police officers, and everybody having these meetings is we're going to start treating alcohol cases with just not the offender. We're actually treating alcohol cases now like we do drug cases. And I'm sure everybody's seen the TV shows where the drug investigator gets the simple possessor on the street. And what's the first thing they do? They try to thwart them. And we do that, I've done numerous drug investigations, and we do that all the time. What are we looking for? We're looking for the drug dealer. We're going to let you walk on this if you give us a bigger fish. We do that all the time. It works well. We work our way up the ladder many, many times. We've decided to, a few years ago, we've started using this tactic on alcohol. We're going after the people that purchase the alcohol for these kids, because what we're finding is it's not the kids purchasing. And if we can get somebody, I hate to pick on you adults, but that has now become our target on doing any alcohol enforcement. I hear all the time, it's a big joke, the adults that I've arrested for this think it's funny that they have purchased alcohol. I've heard every excuse in the book, too. It's, at least they'll stay here. Unfortunately, drunk kids usually aren't going to stay where they think. It's better here than somewhere else. They always like to, and basically, what they're telling everybody is it's okay to do illegal things as long as you can justify it. And I can tell you, we have a jail full of people that are not guilty of anything. And they will tell you that everybody else in jail deserves to be there, but they do not. Because of these concerns, we have started initiating special projects. We do plainclothes projects. And I can tell you, we're watching gas stations, and what we're looking, we're not looking for kids going in. And what we're looking for is a group of people that appear to be under 21, and some adults stepping out of the car, going in and purchasing alcohol, and returning to the car. We are doing surveillance, following them to the party, and then we're making arrests. We're doing everything we do in a drug investigation now for alcohol. We also are charging the folks that are having, two-minute warning. He's going to kick me in two minutes. We're also trying to deal with, we've enacted some new ordinances in the city, and we're trying to enact some more, but these folks that have the party houses that say, "We're not buying the alcohol, but we'll let everybody come here and party," that's who we're going after now. We're targeting them. Last thing I want to talk about, it's not a happy topic. I hear all the time that it's not going to happen to me, I'm not going to be killed in a car crash when I drive drunk, I'm not going to get caught stealing. Unfortunately, being a cop, I go the other way. I've seen the worst in society so much. I'm a little ultra paranoid in my kids, God bless them. They call it lockdown every night because I lock all the doors, secure everything. It's dark because I'm afraid the terrorists are going to attack. They don't know why, but I live in a gray neighborhood, but I still lock down. I'm a little paranoid, but it's because every time I hear somebody say, "It won't happen to me," I want them to go on a death notification with us. The cases I really thought about, the death notifications are bad enough to go to a family member and say, "We've lost somebody," it's bad, and I've done several of those. And we had a lot of people in our community that were younger, that drank a lot, an awful lot, to the point where we were talking to mom or dad once a week, and I began to worry about them. Because if you have cops show up at 3:00 in the morning, and your son or daughter drinks a lot, you can imagine what you think. "Oh my gosh, this is not going to be good news." So I got to the point, being a parent myself, three wonderful kids, that I thought, well the smart thing to do is let these people know everything's okay. So the first thing out of my mouth every time I talked to these people was, "Don't worry, he's fine, he's in jail." I always got that out first so they could relax. I thought that was a great idea. I'll tell you, when it really didn't work is the few times, after several of these visits, I've been to their house 30 or 40 times to let them know their son or daughter's in jail. The last time that I showed up, that wasn't why we were there, because they overdosed and were dead, they'd been killed. And what I found out was those parents were waiting for me to say, "It's okay, they're fine." And when you can't say that, and all you can say is, "Let's go inside and talk," they immediately know that their little one isn't coming home. And that is the toughest thing I've ever had to face, and I wish, when you think about drinking, you can go on a few of those notifications, because you're not the only victim. The families that are left behind are truly, truly the victims of the alcohol. So I thank you for your time. I appreciate any questions you guys ask. Thanks a lot for everything and all the support.
David's comments, I'm sorry, I know him as Dave. Dave and I actually went to high school together, so.
Yes, we did.
And we both ended up in Fairfield. Kind of different, but anyway. His comments made me think a little bit and try to explain something a little bit. Kids under the age of 18, if they are arrested for an alcohol-related offense, they will actually come to the juvenile probation office. So they would visit either with myself or Mr. Walker, he's here this evening also, probation officer. So those kids actually come in and visit with us, they don't just necessarily run out of the blocks to get a fine. One thing that I always kind of pride myself on with working with the kids in alcohol-related offenses, I was very, very strict. I kind of equated what I had them do to what the fine was, and then I would go a little bit further. So for me, doing my job was when a kid said they no longer wanted to work, but me, at the age of 17, would rather go to the adult court because I was more strict with them than just paying a fine. That made me feel a bit like I was doing my job. So just a little clarification so you kind of understand, there are differences from those ages.
I can tell you, he's the only juvenile court officer I ever worked with. If a kid told me, "I'd rather go to adult court than go back to Troyal," just to go there. He's tough.
But don't you think they should be there?
They would rather sit in jail than go to Troyal's office.
Our second speaker this evening will be Kitty Bogel.
Maybe a booster's fair. Sure. My name is Kitty Bogel. I am a substance abuse prevention specialist. I've worked with CEDN, I've been there for over 10 years. I am also a certified DUI instructor for the OWI Drinking Drivers Classes. And I graduated from Buena Vista University with a bachelor's degree in psychology and human services. And this really wasn't anything that I was going to talk about, but since Dave brought it up, it kind of, you know, reminds me of my class. Every time I have OWI class, there is nobody, and I mean nobody, in those classes that woke up that morning and said, "You know, my goal today is to go out and get an OWI. I want to lose my license, pay out a bunch of money, go to jail, have all those effects." Nobody wanted that. So when you say, "You know, it can't happen to me," people think that, and yet it happens all the time. I see it every time I teach class, that, you know, those people didn't plan on having it happen to them either, and yet they still ended up in the class for OWI. I thought I would define prevention, because that is what I do. When we talk about prevention, it's a huge part, preventing underage drinking is a huge part of my job and what I do. And what we try to do is, we try to inform and educate the public about the effects of substance abuse, and then we try to give people the knowledge and the skills to make positive and healthy lifestyle choices. In order to address the issue of underage drinking, we work with basically everybody, all sectors of the population. So we work with youth, and we work with parents, we work with businesses, and schools, law enforcement, coalitions, community members, we work with everybody. When we work with youth, we try and give them the most up-to-date, unbiased information that we can about substances, about the effects of these substances, and then we try to give them the skills to make the best possible decisions that they can. Some of the things that we do to do that, we'll present information in driver's ed classes, so we can teach them about the effects of alcohol, and then driving under the influence and what can happen. We go into health classes or other kinds of classes and try to teach the health effects of some of these substances. We facilitate programming, such as we have a curriculum called Brain Power, which is targeted at elementary and middle school kids. And we go in and we teach these kids of how the brain works, and then how substances affect the brain, and how it's going to affect the brain, their body, and different parts of their lives. We also try to train administration, teachers, staff, so that they will also know some of the issues that are out there. And we try to be a part of a lot of the activities that are going on with youth, or we try to promote those activities. One of the things we hear is, "There's nothing to do." There are things to do. We want to promote those healthy activities rather than having youth think that, you know, using substances. We work with parents to give them the information to help their own kids. Parents need to get educated. So if you're a parent out there, you need to really start looking at the information that's out there, and finding what substances are out there, and what issues there are that your young person is having to deal with. Because you're going to need to know that information so that you can help them make positive decisions. One of the things I always tell parents is, "It's never too early to start talking to your child." We work with parents from one end of the extreme to the other. So we work with pregnant mothers, and we teach them the effects of alcohol consumption during pregnancy. We work with families, small children, adolescents, all the way up to senior citizens. We want to show parents how to talk to their children, no matter what age they are. We want to get that information out there. Some of the other areas that we work with, we do work with businesses, we work with alcohol retailers. So what we try and do, try to train them to deal with the issue of underage people buying alcohol. We try to teach them how to spot fake IDs, how to deal with difficult situations. So those are some of the ways that we can help them. One of the, we didn't actually initiate this, but I thought I would give you a couple of initiatives taken by a business. You guys know who Hy-Vee is, right? Okay. Hy-Vee had some issues, I don't know what stores they were, and they initiated their alcohol policy across the board, corporate-wide. So now, when anyone goes in to buy alcohol at a Hy-Vee store, they must be ID'd. No matter how old they are, everyone is ID'd, and the ID is scanned. Yeah. So you know, it's a great policy, because it's a little bit more security for their alcohol, and also it takes a lot of the pressure off the clerks. They don't have to guess anymore who they need to ID or who they don't. Everybody gets ID'd. So you know, that's one of the policies that we just thought was absolutely great, being enacted by a company. We work with other businesses to help them initiate and to strengthen their growth-free workplace policies, and not just as employees, but also as parents and grandparents. We want to get information out there to everybody that they can use in their personal lives. We also work with law enforcement. We do things like compliance checks, shoulder taps, different kinds of things like this. Have you guys ever heard of these before? Compliance checks are simply, very briefly, is when an underage person is sent into a business that sells alcohol, and then they attempt to purchase alcohol. Okay? And it's to identify the businesses that have some problems IDing, you know, checking IDs. So it's one of the tools that can be used. One of the other ones is shoulder taps, and that's just when young people are outside of a business, and they ask adults to go in and buy alcohol. So that particular program is targeted at the adults that are buying alcohol for young people. I think they also call it the "Hey Mister" program.
Hey Mister.
Yeah, okay. So you've heard of it.
Yes, I've seen it.
Oh, okay. So those are just some of the things that we do with law enforcement.
You're the death station.
We also work with community coalitions to help educate the community, to initiate social changes. Some of those things might be limiting alcohol at community events, things like social host laws. I mean, we have different initiatives that can be enacted within a community. There's virtually no sector of the population that we do not work with. We work with everyone somehow, some way. And we need to do that because preventing underage drinking is everybody's problem. It affects everyone. One of the biggest issues that we face when we go into a community is society or community apathy. A lot of people don't see youth alcohol consumption as a problem. Many people just simply see it as a rite of passage. One of the things that we need to do, or my job in prevention, is to change people's attitudes regarding this. We want to get people to understand that alcohol is a drug, just like some of the other ones out there. It is the most used, most abused, and in some instances, the most devastating drug that we see. Its effects can be long-lasting and life-changing for people. By shrugging our shoulders, by looking away, okay, by having that apathy in our community, we're allowing our young people to use a substance that can affect not only their mental and emotional development, but other aspects of their lives, family, social, academics, everything. It can be long-lasting, and it can put them at risk for dependence and addiction. As community members, we need to start to move forward toward change. We want our children to be safe, we want them to be successful, and we want them to be happy. We can no longer afford to look the other way and hope somebody else takes care of this problem. Some things I was looking at nationwide, approximately 10% of 9- to 10-year-olds have started drinking. Nearly 10% of 9- to 10-year-olds have started drinking. Nearly 1/3 of those began drinking before the age of 13. And age is getting younger and younger all the time. Persons reporting alcohol first use before the age of 15 are four to five times more likely to report past-year alcohol dependence and abuse. An estimated 1,700 college students die every year from alcohol-related unintentional injuries. An estimated 1,700 college students die every year from alcohol-related unintentional injuries. Approximately 700,000 students are assaulted by other students who are drinking. About 100,000 students every year are victims of alcohol-related sexual assaults and date rape. These statistics are way too high.
Yes, they are. Did you know that we're number two?
Yeah, I did.
Underage drinking.
Yes, I did. I did know that. Thank you.
Thank you, I did too.
Underage drinking is a leading contributor to death from injuries, which are the main cause of death of people under the age of 21. So again, you know, there's lots of statistics out there, but the numbers are way too high. The statistics show that there are a lot of problems caused from the issue of underage drinking. When I talked to Don, he wanted me to give a personal story about how this affects me. The only problem with that is, there are so many stories. Every time I talk to someone, anyone, everybody has a story about how alcohol has affected their life, somehow, some way, in the negative. You know, that should be this big, huge, red flashing sign for us, that there's a problem. I know everybody here feels really strongly about the issue of underage drinking. That's why we're here. It's time that we stand up, we move forward, and we make changes. Changes that protect our young people, and changes that can make a difference in our community. Thank you.
Each speaker's already kind of touched upon things that I wanted to make sure I kind of got in there. Kitty touched upon parents. I'm extremely happy to see the number of adults that we have in the room. One thing that I find in my profession that is very frustrating for me, as tied to really any offense that I deal with, is, not to offend anybody, but parents just not doing their job. I mean, I see a lot of parents that find, or seem to think it's far more important to be a friend to their child than to actually do the discipline that they need to do, check their Facebook accounts, know who their friends are, know where their kids are at, know what they're doing. You know, I actually kind of real quickly ran through my head if I wanted to say some of what I'm about to say, but I think for parents, it's extremely important to understand that kids just aren't drinking alcohol. Kids are gummy bears. They're soaking gummy bears in alcohol. You know, they put it in rum, they're calling them rummy bears. So you see your kid eating packages of gummy bears? You never know. That's how advanced things have gotten. Kids are doing things so differently, so that they can't get caught. They don't want alcohol in their breath, so they're pouring it in their eyeballs. Vodka-balling is what it's called. I mean, parents, there's a lot of information out there. Get on websites. There are tons of ways to find information. If you suspect something with your kid, confront him on it. Don't let it go. Off my soapbox, next speaker is Stacy Worley.
As Troy said, I'm Stacy Worley. I've been around this community my whole entire life. I am the Assistant Outpatient Director at Jefferson County Health Center. Basically, what that job includes and encompasses is, I'm the manager of the emergency room, and I also do education, which is why I'm here tonight. I also have worked at the University of Iowa in the emergency room there for five years. So, the amount of alcohol-related incidents that I see here in Jefferson County is compounded a lot by what I saw at the university, because up there, we saw the worst of the worst. Here, we're seeing what happens at a local level. For those kids who are lucky enough that come in with alcohol-related injuries, they get to go home, usually. I've also worked in EMS and fire as well, so I've seen it on that side as well. They've asked me to speak about what happens to a patient, adult or child, when they come into the emergency room for an alcohol-related incident. Whether that be someone's passed out, and their friends get worried about them, and they drop them off at our front door and leave. That happens. We have parents who bring their children in because they don't know what's going on. And then we have the car accidents that are devastating. How many of you raise a hand like to be poked by needles? Anybody? We're going to poke you, okay? We're going to poke anybody that comes in, because what we need to know is how high your blood alcohol level is. We're not nice about it, we don't have the breathalyzer test that the police department has. We have to have a blood test, plain and simple. You're going to get fluids, because it's going to make you feel better. Because at this point, most of the time, the people that we're seeing with alcohol-related incidents are vomiting a lot. We are going to give you fluids, blood pressure monitoring. If you are underage, we will be calling your parents. Because of certain federal regulations, we do not call the cops, because it's called a HIPAA violation. But however, if you're drunk and belligerent, or if someone is drunk and belligerent, and you're cursing at my staff, or hitting them, or kicking them, or spitting on them, which happens a lot, and you may not believe that in our small-town ER, but it happens a lot, we then call the officers, and they're gracious enough to come out and take care of that for us. There's a lot of things that encompass that. And just for parents' sake, an average ER charge for that is $1,500 to $2,000. That's a good portion of money to go to your car fund, or to your college fund. Unfortunately, what we see in the emergency room is, is that if we have parents that have drinking problems, we tend to see children who have drinking problems. We also see underage people who are coming in with alcohol incidents, coming in later for other drug-related incidents, whether that be prescription drugs or illicit drugs. We have many motor vehicle crashes that thankfully, cars are made better, as far as safety features, so people aren't dying at a rate that they probably would have been if they were in vehicles 20 years ago. Every car has headrests now, they have shoulder belts. These are things that are saving people's lives. But it just means that we've gotten luckier. We haven't gotten better about treating the alcohol issues. Some people don't realize how injured a person can be and not realize it. I've taken care of one person who had an amputation of his leg. He didn't know it was gone. To wake up and realize that your leg's now gone because you were in a motorcycle crash with, while you were trying to outrun the police, and when you come to me in my emergency room and you hand me your foot in a box, that's devastating, and that's something that that person will never get back. They show a lot in movies about, oh, if someone gets this amputated, they're going to bring it in and they're going to reattach it. I would guess probably less than 2% of the time, they can reattach anything. And especially from a motor vehicle accident, it just doesn't happen. Not only do we see motor vehicle crashes from alcohol-related incidents, but we see Deer stands are a good one for people that are being, they're intoxicated and decide to climb up a tree. Not really sure how that works, but as we've all demonstrated that, you know, our thinking isn't clear when we're under the influence, whether you've had one or whether you've had five. You know, your brain isn't clear, your decision-making isn't clear. Some people are going to get by and be lucky, and "lucky" is the term that I use, because every time that you get in a vehicle or do something risky under the influence of alcohol, there's always that chance that something devastating is going to happen to you. And if it doesn't, and you get through your young years, I've actually seen, I've treated at least three to four people who have died in their late twenties and early thirties because of liver failure. You don't have to drink for 50 years to become an alcoholic and to have it damage your liver to the point that your body can't go on. Some people can do enough damage in 10 years to make that happen. It's just like smoking. It takes, everybody's different. Some people can smoke for 60 years and be fine, and some people can smoke for five years and have emphysema and COPD. It's sort of like Russian roulette, because you don't know how it's going to affect your I've sort of explained about some of the violence that we have heard as nursing staff, and it's becoming a bigger issue, because we're seeing more and more alcohol and drug-related incidents, and those people tend to be more aggressive, and they tend to take it out on those people that have nothing, you know, we're just doing our jobs. And so it's, there's actually legislation out there that if that happens, they're trying to pass it so that it's a greater charge. So those are just some things to think about. And I know it's fun to take pictures, and I know that there are a lot of pictures posted out there on websites. For those of you looking to go into a professional career, just remember that anything that's out there on social media, recruiters are looking at, employers are looking at, and that's all things that they can look at, and things that you are doing now as a young person can dramatically affect what your life's going to be: your professional life, your home life, what your disabilities are going to be. Thankfully, knock on wood, we haven't had one of those horrific accidents recently. But that tends to bring this to light, and what I think all of us here are trying to do is bring this to the forefront of everybody's minds before something like that happens So just be cognizant of it, and make sure that, for parents, just make sure that you're, like Troy said, asking the questions. If you don't know where your kids are, ask them, find out, and make them accountable for their actions. I hear a lot of times in the emergency room, "Oh, my kid wouldn't do that," or "Someone forced them to do that." There's always choices in life, and we have to make sure that if they're not making the right choice this time, that they're going to make the right choice next time.
Anytime, anytime we receive a call after hours on a young person that's intoxicated, if we have other charges aside from alcohol-related offenses, and we make a determination that that young person needs to be, rather than returned home to mom and dad, or maybe staying in the hospital, we're going to place them in a detention center. Essentially, what that is, is that's a jail for underage people. The one that we use in this area is in Fort Madison. An intoxicated person, a young person, would also have to go to the hospital, be checked out, in the ER room before they will even take that young person. So, it's, not only is it the trip to the ER and the cost that Stacy mentioned, and I was not aware of that, that's a very staggering cost, but then, that young person goes to a detention center, which then costs discounting $160 a day to stay in that detention center. So, there's an incurring cost to everybody in this room for those situations. It's just not that trip to the hospital for that fee to the parents. It's everybody in this room. You might not be related to that young person, but you're helping pay that bill to that detention center. Just another connection to everybody in this room. Next speaker will be Mike Champ.
I'm Mike Champ. I'm a substance abuse counselor here in Fairfield. I work for CED's Substance Abuse Services in the Fairfield office. And, so I'm here to bring kind of a counseling perspective to this, a little bit about what I do, and some of the information, I hope doesn't sound too clinical for you, but I want, because I want you to understand that I do get the human side of this. I've, I've had very intimate experience with this subject matter, and have been able to get through it, and as a miracle of God's grace, come out the other side of it, and I get the awesome opportunity now to counsel other people who struggle with issues of alcohol, and as Kitty said, other drugs. Alcohol is a drug. And to begin with, I want to just talk a little bit about, and remind us of this period in the adolescent's life, from a developmental standpoint, and understand that this period of development offers an opportunity for the formation of both identity and autonomy. And there's many opportunities here for growth, all kinds of pleasurable experiences, and the exploration of a world of ideas for the adolescent. It can be a time of healthy preparation for adulthood, but it can also be a time of inner turmoil, family problems, dysfunction. So as we consider both sides of the coin, with, on the one side of the coin, this opportunity for this healthy development, preparation for adulthood, and on the other side, the inner turmoil, that dichotomy portrays both opportunity and vulnerability for the adolescent. And so the focus of this forum tonight is on just one of those vulnerabilities, it's commentary youth, and that's substance abuse, alcohol abuse, in particular, underage drinking. And as has been mentioned, there are many national survey data reports that are out there that really highlight the seriousness of this, and others have presented some of those in the program tonight. There are a number of statistics in there, but I want to give you just a couple more. This data comes from about 2006, and one of them is that on a typical day in the life of the adolescent, 7,970 youth drank alcohol for the first time in a single day. And one-third of youth between ages 12 and 17, one-third of those youth in the country, more than eight million, had drank alcohol in the past year. So it's a major public health concern in the United States. And another thing, another point that indicates this is a report of over 39% of high school seniors reporting using alcohol before the age of 13. And more alarming is the revelation that fewer than half of those high school seniors perceived binge drinking two or a couple of days over the weekend as being harmful. So specific to the concerns tonight is the data that's been coming out of the Iowa Youth Survey on underage drinking in Jefferson County, which places this community second in the state in regards to the incidence of underage drinking. A good, valuable information about the problem of alcohol use by our young people. One thing I want to emphasize is, this is not a new problem, and there's a reason I want to emphasize that. It's not something that's unique to this generation. It's a problem that's trended right along with other, that other national data has showed us, a trend that began back in the 60s, and it's a period of time that I experienced as an adolescent myself, and when attitudes began to relax toward underage drinking. As I said, I experienced that social change, and that began to normalize underage drinking as many adults became more accepting of this kind of behavior for this age group. And I make this point to accentuate the point that the solution is also going to be trans-generational. The past 50 years have provided more than ample time for the rationalizations and the minimizations that we've heard about, some of which spoke about tonight, to become enduring constructs in the scheme of our community. Underage drinking just simply can no longer be the norm or the expectation that so many have often argued. Point's been brought up, and it's well-taken. A little bit about what I do in substance abuse counseling. A little bit about what I do in substance abuse counseling. When someone comes to my office, most interventions begin predominantly through referral to seated office by juvenile court services. Most adolescents come there by that referral. And as is typical of our adult referrals, clients are most often mandated for an evaluation of treatment recommendations. So when they come to the office, it's typical of going to a professional office, you get all the paperwork out of the way, the intake, the insurance forms, going over each individual's rights and responsibilities as a client, and let me do some assessments, and a couple of specific assessments, so that you don't think that they just come in, we sit down and have a little casual conversation, and I say, "Well, it sounds like maybe you have a problem. Sounds like maybe you might need some treatment." It's a little more objective than that. So there's a couple of tests that we give each person that comes in, a simple screening instrument for alcohol and other drug evaluation, and other drug abuse, and a mental health After they've completed those, we do a very thorough history of how substance abuse has impacted various domains of a person's life. And I'll tell you what those areas are, it's withdrawal, medical issues and physical functioning, co-occurring disorders, motivation to change, drug and alcohol use history, employment, social relational functioning, and legal history. After we get all this information from the assessments and the history, it's all kind of boiled down to complete what we call an ASAM risk rating protocol, where there are six of these dimensions where a risk rating is given, and a level of care that might be appropriate for that risk is given. So it's a little more objective than just having a little talk and my subjective opinion saying, "Well, I think you do or don't need treatment." Extended outpatient is, at this point in time, is the only level of formal treatment offered at the Fairfield CETA Center. There are other levels of care that are offered at our Atumal office, more intensive outpatient Right now, the adolescent program that we have consists of an hour and a half group counseling, weekly, and a minimum of an hour of individual counseling a month. And the duration of this training varies, but it can be, it's gonna be a minimum of about 13 weeks. Let me just close with, kind of going over a little bit about what I mentioned earlier, and knowing that while multiple pathways can lead to this alcohol consumption by adolescents, including just normal experimentation, and although history, as I've said, confirms that it's not a new problem, the new data that we have collected in the last couple of decades does affirm that the early initiation of alcohol use increases the risk of alcohol-related problems and mental health diagnosis as adults. What this is gonna take, in order for, I think, to see the change, is gonna be a paradigm shift in the whole attitude, collective attitudes of our community. Those attitudes which have promoted, rather than discouraged, underage drinking in our youth. Prevention efforts that are both comprehensive and especially integrative are keys to a positive outcome. By integrating, I mean the discussions that arise out of these changed attitudes towards adolescent drinking. Discussions that begin in the home will extend into all spheres of the adolescent's life, including schools, churches, centers for recreation, professional offices, libraries, and the workplace for our youth, wherever they go. And whatever evidence-based programming the Coalition might come up with as a recommendation, or whatever social ordinances may be proposed and adopted. There's gotta be a new narrative. A new narrative must be encountered with new expectations, no matter where our adolescents go. So we begin to rewrite our story, the story that's being told about our county and our youth. And this new narrative that reflects this change in attitudes about underage drinking is gonna be the beginning of our new story, a new story for our community, a restructured community identity that includes gaining additional insights into new alternative choices and behaviors for our youth.
Outside of the services that are provided by CETA here in our local area, we in juvenile court have at least, I'm aware of, three other programs that we use in the state of Iowa for substance abuse programming, and these are actual placements where our youth would go and stay for a period of time. There's one program in Ames, Iowa, it's called Youth Recovery House. That is actually a program where parents can contact that program directly and set up that placement for their child. They do a very nice job of working with payment, with the families for that program. We use that a lot. I like to use it as a way to get the kid to buy into the programming. I will make agreements with kids that if you go on your own and complete this anywhere from 30 to 90-day program, I'm gonna work with you when you come home. Maybe you can get a better deal when you go to court, your charge isn't as serious, or you know, your probation might not be as long when you come home.
Where do they go if they don't have insurance?
They work, actually, with the parents quite well.
I noticed he said insurance.
Well, there's different, there's different insurance forms.
Is there places where that pays, places not insured?
That's where I'm going next.
Okay, thank you.
One of the other programs we use is actually in Burlington, Iowa, Woodlands Treatment Center, and that's actually a court-ordered program, where they go to court, they are court-ordered to go to. And actually, the payment for that program would be the Department of Human Services, it's a state-funded program. So again, we're sending a child somewhere, and again, everybody's paying for it. Again, that tie-in to one kid affects everybody. And then, one of the other programs we use is in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, it's called ASAC, Area for Substance Abuse Counseling. Now, they actually, to be placed in that program, they would have to go through a substance abuse counselor, they would have to go through all the steps of treatment, and then a substance abuse counselor would have to make that recommendation for a child to go to that specific program. That's in Cedar Rapids. Our last speaker, and I think most of us on the board thought this was probably going to be the most powerful or have the most impact, would like to have Mr. Corbin Chid come in.
Hi, everybody. First of all, I'd like to start out by saying I was one of those, or just about every one of them, statistics those people were saying. The way I used to be, I started drinking at a very young age. By the age of nine, I was drinking on a regular basis, regular, and basically started snagging drinks at parties around, you know, when I was younger, and swiping beers from refrigerator and hitting liquor cabinets. And by the time I was a teen, I was smoking pot or drinking every day. Also started doing speed, and at 14, I had a trip to the emergency room from an alcohol-related overdose, I got sent to treatment. I quit school when I was in 10th grade, started doing narcotics regularly, selling pot, went to prison when I was 19 for selling pot. By the time I was 21, I buried six of my friends, very close friends, in a drunk, from drunk driving accidents. One of those I watched with my own eyes. And got sent back to prison for bad UAs when I was, after that. And from then on, I was pretty much into narcotics and drinking every day. Somewhere along the line, I started reading the Bible a little bit, and going to men's fellowship breakfast. And I wanted to change, but I didn't know how, and I wasn't liking the life that I had. It took me down a lot of hard roads and unnecessary stuff that caused me a lot of heartache. When I was, let's see, where am I at here? I'm not used to doing this, so bear with me, please. Somewhere along the line there, I started reading the Bible, and I wasn't quite getting it, but I knew I wanted something different, and I asked the girl that I was living with at the time to marry me, and I didn't get the answer I wanted, and six weeks later, she died in a car crash. And I went off the deep end, if you could go any deeper than I was already had gone. And if it wasn't for a few friends that were sober and had my best interests in mind, I would have died. And it still surprises me that I lived through a lot of the stuff that I did. A year and three days after Lori died, I got busted for drugs again, and I expected I was headed back to prison. I bonded out of jail, and I was still living my life the same way I was, and I had an incident when I was supposed to go see my PO, and I had some alcohol and drugs lined up, I was getting ready to go do it since I saw my PO, and luckily, he told me that I looked a little better. When I went in there, he showed me a picture of myself, what I looked like when I was arrested, and that scared me, because I looked bad. And I didn't go out and do any drugs or alcohol that day, and I started working the 12-step program, going to NA and AA, and I went to treatment at CETA. I gave my life to the Lord, my Savior Jesus Christ, and the way things are for me now, I've been sober, well, tomorrow will be nine months I've been sober. I have peace of mind now that I never had in my whole life. As you can see, I didn't go back to prison, and I have a new life, or a new family and church at the New Life Community Church here in Fairfield, and that's part of my story. Here are some suggestions that I have for parents and caregivers. Don't let your children make their own hours. No overnighters, long time without responsible adults being there supervising them. Make the kids be accountable, wherever they're going, who they're with, why they're going there, how they're getting to and from, where they're going. And I think parents, I think somebody touched upon this earlier, but parents need to be parents to their kids, not their friends. And if you get to be parent, get to be friends with your kids someday, that's great, but first of all, you gotta be parents to do that job. And make there be consequences for their kids' actions, just don't let them slide by, you know? And don't assume, everybody knows what assuming does. Keep track of alcohol in the household, and alcohol is obtained, at least in my day, it was obtained from my friends' older siblings, and younger aunts and uncles that thought it was cool, you know, and they didn't think there was anything wrong with it. Ask where they're spending their money, because it takes money to acquire alcohol and drugs. And make eye contact, and especially when they come home from outings. And that's about all I got. Thank you, and I hope some of these suggestions will be of help.